Welcome, City of West Miami. Regular commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 1st at 7:30 PM. If we could rise for the invocation. And tonight, it's going to be by our city manager. Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's bow our heads this evening and thank God, our Lord, for our countless blessings. We pray for peace and unity in our communities. We pray and we ask for you to keep our first responders safe so that they can return home to their families. We pray for our police officers and family members throughout who have lost their lives while serving and protecting, especially during the months of May, as we remember all of our fallen officers. We pray for your divine mercy and intervention so that peace, calm, and democracy can prevail in Venezuela. We pray for all of our West Miami family, city employees, and we pray so that you can keep them safe and out of harms way always. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Chief, would you lead us in the pledge, please, sir?
I will lead this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes is not present. Commissioner Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Present. For the record, city manager Yolanda Aguilar, city attorney Jose Villalobos, and city clerk Anetti Gonzalez are present.
Next item, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for April 17, 2019, regular commission meeting. And I would respectfully request a deferral of this item until the May 15 meeting.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Clerk, thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, since we do have our accountants and Jerry, have you had time to breathe? Are you okay? We're good. I'd like to take them out of order. I'm sure they're very busy and we have them at the end of the agenda, so I'd like to take their presentation at this time, which would be items F and G.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 11F, presentation of the financial statements for fiscal year ended September 30, 2018, by Rodriguez Trueva, Jerry Donates, Carlos Trueva, City's independent auditors.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Madam Mayor, commissioners. My name is Carlos Trueva. I am the audit partner for the City of West Miami. Our offices are at 2600 Douglas Road, Coahuila, Florida. It is, as always, a pleasure to be here, Madam Manager, Madam Clerk, Chief, Mr. Pena, Luli. It's great to be here always and present the results of our audit to the commission and to the management of the city. With me is Jerry Donates, who's the manager in charge of the job. I'm gonna ask him to come up here and give a brief presentation. And then, as I always do, I would like to offer some thoughts on how the city has done during the last year that ended in September of 18. I think some of the things that you need to look forward to this year and maybe next year.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, city commissioners, and city administration. As Carlos mentioned, my name is Jerry Donates, and I was the manager on the audit of the fiscal year 9/30/18 financial statements. I'll briefly provide just a brief presentation on the results of our audit and discuss a couple of things, and I'll turn it back over to Carlos. In terms of an overview of more technical aspects of accounting and the financial statements themselves, there were no new accounting policies adopted during 2018, and there were no new or significant policies or standards that affected the financial statements in a significant manner. Significant accounting estimates included such things as depreciation of capital assets, compensated absences, and the net pension liability as related to the Florida retirement system. With those balances, we basically test and review the calculations in accordance with certain agreements and actuarial information to determine whether the balances are recorded accurately and are reasonable. In regards to the audit process itself, we did not encounter any issues in dealing with management to fulfill our procedures, and we did not have any disagreements with management. The finance director and city manager and entire staff, everything we asked for and requested, they provided it to us in an efficient manner and timely manner, so we had no issues with obtaining information for the audit. The audit report includes an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. There were no findings in the fiscal year 9/30/2018 audit, and also, there were no prior year findings to address this year. In terms of some of the asset and liability and fund balances, the first page of the executive summary basically shows a four-year comparison of the governmental funds and enterprise funds. One of the balances we always discuss is the unassigned fund balance. So in the general fund, that's been increasing over the last several years. This year, it decreased, basically because the general fund is covering some of the losses of the sewer and water funds. So as I usually say, you know, you have to continually monitor the amounts that are owed between funds on an annual basis. In the enterprise funds, there were no drastic changes. You know, however, as I mentioned, because of amounts being loaned from the other funds and then operating losses that have accumulated over the years, there's a net unrestricted deficit in the enterprise funds. And if this, you know, if this isn't addressed, then, you know, you want to address that to prevent the general fund from having to cover those losses. In regards to revenues, the property tax revenues increased as expected. There were no surprises there. Some other revenues, such as building permits and impact fees, increased, but that was simply due to the timing of projects and developments, things like that. And in total, expenditures decreased slightly from the previous year, most likely because there were still some lingering expenditures related to the hurricane that filtered into last year. In terms of the key indicators, as I mentioned, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, that decreased about approximately $115,000 in 2018, and the total balance is approximately $718,000 as of the end of that year. This has remained consistent over the last several years, and the only reason it decreased this year is, again, because of the losses that the general fund had to cover from the water and sewer funds. In regards to the enterprise funds, you know, there's two points there. Number one, you know, there are major improvements that are needed, as you all know. And number two, just being aware that if costs continue to outweigh the fees that are being collected, the general fund, the reserves, will be eaten by those losses. The second half of the packet, it includes some of the financial statements, balance sheets, and statement of revenues and expenditures by fund, just to give you a little more detail. But basically, in closing, I mean, the city management has, once again, you know, I believe they do a great job in managing the city's budget and its finances, and we always enjoy working with Mercedes Leon, the finance director. She always does a good job with maintaining the accounting and bookkeeping of the cities, of the city records. If anyone has any questions, feel free to answer them. And as always, we're always available any other time that you ever have any questions or would like to meet with us or...
I do have a question, Jerry. You said the unassigned general fund is 718.
Right.
That would be, what are, that would be our reserves?
Right. Unassigned fund balance in the general fund, approximately $718,000. That is the reserves that are unrestricted, so it can be used for general operating expenditures or not restricted by anything. Whereas, for example, impact fees are restricted to be used for specific use. So, but the unassigned fund balance is the reserves in the general fund.
718.
Yeah.
And I'm all about building our reserves. What is, what would you consider to be a healthy amount that we should be at?
And based on the budget, the city, probably about 1.3, 1.5 million would be a...
Our desired goal?
Yeah.
Okay. We're getting there.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Carlos? Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
May I ask?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donates.
Thank you.
I always try to give you an idea of where the city's at and what you should look at in your upcoming budget hearings. The city had a fantastic redevelopment plan, and the results of that plan, the first actual results of that plan were in 2018, and revenues increased in the general fund by a million dollars. And you see construction going up in the city, which means that as those buildings get online, you're going to get additional revenues from the tax rolls and... So you did everything that you had to do to get that, to increase the revenues of the city, and you accomplished that. Your water and sewer system is aging. It's now sewer phase two is about 25 years old. Sewer phase one is about 30, and it's in need of repair. And the city, and we've gone over this before, is small in relation, it has too few users in relation to its system. So you have your fees at a maximum. You, I don't think you can increase fees to cover deficits in the water and sewer system. And you're having losses that are getting covered by your surpluses now in your general fund. So your challenge in this budget and over the next budgets, and I had the opportunity to discuss with the mayor and discuss with the city manager, is finding a solution to deal with the repair, the renovation, the, to do something with the water and sewer We have talked about this since Mayor Jedra Cruz was here, I think, it was about 10 years ago.
Correct.
So we've had this conversation before, and you have always acted appropriately to get to where you're at. But 10 years, 10 or more, have passed, and the system is older. Your debt will be paid in about a year and a half. So conversations need to be over the next years, over the next couple of years, on dealing with improving your water and sewer system. I've made myself available to the manager, and I make myself available to you to have any workshops, any questions, but you need to entertain different solutions that might be available to deal with this shortfall in the water and sewer system that cannot be covered by the water and sewer system itself. You cannot, you really cannot build more for the services that you provide. Management has done the best that they can to allocate resources, but the system requires repairs, it requires the services of the city for administrative, for administration, accounting, et cetera. So it's something that I want to bring to your attention because your general fund, for, I think, maybe the first time since I've been your auditor, is strong, and it will continue to be strong. The city's under control, expenses are under control, you have a good team, a good team working that will continue to focus on giving the city and the residents the best possible service for a reasonable cost. But you have this deficit that it's hitting you on the side, and I think you need to address that, so the city can grow. The couple of other things that I always talk to you about is annexation. That's a very difficult thing. I think you're gonna have, in the next, this is 20, in 2020, between 2020 and 2022, I think you're gonna have 11 new county commissioners. So there might be a window of opportunity for annexation and incorporation in Miami-Dade as you get a new mayor and you have a new commissioner, and a new group of commissioners coming in because of the limits and term limits. So that, we'll see what happens. It's, you know, it's what I'm looking at now for my clients, and again, you have, your governmental consulting group is very good and will properly keep you in the loop and keep you advised as to how that moves forward. That's a potential solution for the sewer problem, because you will have more users. So I'm usually a little more positive, but I do wanna caution you because I see light at the end of the tunnel, usually, and I'm, you had some repairs this year, and where we foresaw maybe a deficit that would be covered, you had some repairs that took part of the surplus. And let me know, you had a $2 million surplus in your general fund and your special revenue fund. So the city is doing, I cannot emphasize enough how great the city is doing, and it was an excellent job of getting here over the last four years. I know that you paid with blood and tears and sweat, and, but that was achieved. You'll see that coming, that revenue stream coming and be coming into the coffers of the city. But you need to address the sewer problem, and it might require some financing as you finish paying off the debt in the next couple of years. But that's your challenge, that's your challenge for 2019 and, I think, 2020.
Carlos, I want to thank you, first and foremost, for the information. I want to continue the city being great. So I'm going to take you up on your offer of your workshop. That workshop would be for us, is that correct?
For, yes.
For us. I would like to take you up on that because I think we need that, so we can get a good plan of action in place.
Okay.
And we have to act upon it now. I'm heeding your warnings, and we need to act upon it now. So, Madam Manager, if you would, I'd like to set up a workshop with our accountants.
Of course.
So that we can further discuss and obtain details and brainstorm what we need to do.
I think, you're working on the budget?
We're gonna start, we've already started to receive some projections from the county. We rely on some outside sources, but yes, the process is beginning now.
So as you complete, as you complete that process, because I think that's important, you have July dates.
Yes, no, no, right.
So as you complete that process, we can meet and then set a date after...
I think sometime early August would be a good idea.
That's fine.
Because it's after the preliminary submittal.
That's fine.
And it's gonna give us some room to work with before the tentative budget hearing.
And I was, again, that plays right into whether you wanna address any budget issues at that point in time after the workshop.
I just didn't want tonight to go by and may not bring it up because I want to act on it. So whenever you see fit, we will, you know, have this workshop with you.
Okay.
And in the workshop, we can also, Madam Mayor, members of the city commission, and for those that did not sit at the dais 10 years ago, we can give you a little bit of history of what our efforts, where our efforts to look beyond the City of West Miami have led in terms of talking to Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer and looking at the options that we have explored.
Good, okay.
Over the past decade.
Okay.
So this, nothing here is new, and we hope that we can address it, hopefully, after the state takes a serious look at our budget request for our infrastructure this year.
Perfect, perfect.
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Trueva.
I think you remember Mayor Riboredo, right? You remember him?
Yes.
He was the mayor when he created the sewer. Then, big problems come, and was the man, and the city was sued, he sued the company, was a big problem when he created that sewer system, okay? And then, because that was not done well, we have the problems that we almost finished. You said, and I think a year and a half, we get out of the debt in 18 months, right? As we said, a year and a half?
Twenty-two.
So in 18 months, we are free and clear from the problems with the sewer system?
With the debt.
With the debt. So we will be free of debt, we will be free of debt in 18 months, okay? So this is a good thing.
Excellent.
Because in 18 months, we will be free to do things. We are not free now to do things in the sewer system, but in 18 months, it's a short time. So we will be out of the debt. So it's good news. And then, we will maybe planning in a different way, because we will have a different economic situation for that. So, thank you for letting me know, 18 months, because it's a short period. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Commissioner.
Commissioner Blanes, I believe you had a question?
Just to, this is something that I heard on the news, I think it was yesterday, that the leader of the, the Democrat leader of the Senate, I think it's Chuck Schumer, had a conversation with the president where there is a bipartisan support for a $2 trillion infrastructure bill that will be supported by President Trump if it comes up. So the time is right for this type of, for following up on times of requests and for exploring possibilities over the next couple of years, because there will be federal funding available, as I think the City of West Miami is just part of the average of the poor infrastructure that exists in the United States. And, you know, the roads are great, but water and systems, I think, are lacking throughout America, and bridges. I think that's where a lot of that money is gonna go into, but I think it's the right time to explore that need for...
Yeah, we have to keep praying because they have another meeting next week. And next week, we will know if they agree with the program for infrastructure. So next week, we will be more happy than today, because today, we are still in limbo.
Yep.
But next week, maybe you are the miracle man.
I don't know, I don't know. I just deliver news.
Anyone else?
Anyway, I wanted to thank, I know that Jerry did, but I do too. It's a pleasure to work with the staff of the city, and it's an honor to work with you. You've always been responsive to us and to my suggestions, and we've been able to always talk, and when I bring you news that are sometimes not the best, like today, you appreciate it and you encourage me to be of service to you. So I wanted to thank you all for letting us be your auditors.
May I say, I think we should recognize, you know, Rodriguez Trueva, one of the best companies in the Miami-Dade County, in South Florida.
Thank you, sir.
Very respectful company. And also, I want to recognize our budget director, Luli.
Yes, yes.
Is there.
Absolutely.
See, she worked very hard with them. So all these good things, Luli is part of that. Congratulations, Luli. Thank you very much.
We cannot take for granted the extraordinary team that we have. We cannot take that for granted, the hard work that they do and the wonderful job that they do for us, our accounting department, our accountants, our staff. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I know, I thought you had a question.
I apologize for being late.
No, no.
I, you know, I got...
We heard, we heard, so we weren't sure.
So I...
We, yes, we...
I had to be attentive.
Are you ready? I know, I know, I know. We, that's why we just, the invocation, the pledge, and then we took Carlos first because they were at the end. I didn't want them to wait the whole meeting, so that's why. I thought we would be able to, you know, extend the invocation and the pledge and give you time.
I tried to be on time, but it was, it was different.
We know, we know, you have an emergency call, so...
There's no problem, sir, no problem. Madam Clerk, if you'll please recognize Commissioner Blanes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, yes, Commissioner Blanes arrived at 7:37 and is being entered into the record.
Thank you. Shall we go back to the order of the agenda?
I think we have another item, item 11G, which also is in connection with Mr. Rodriguez Trueva. Item 11G, report by Rodriguez Trueva and Company, PA, on the company merger to GEMRT and Company LLP, independent auditors, and possible request for resolution recognizing GEMRT and Company LLP as the city's independent auditors. City manager, Carlos Trueva.
If I may, Madam Mayor, the, we were notified several months ago that there was going to be a merger between RTC and JEM? Is it JEM? JEM. And so that acquisition or that merger has occurred, and just so that we can have on record, as we do customary, we asked them to provide a letter of their business transaction so that the city can recognize our continued relationship with Rodriguez Trueva, who is now part of this merger. And so there's a letter in your file, in your agenda packet, explaining or setting forth the conditions of that professional services agreement between the city and what we know now to be JEMRT. So I don't know if we're going to need a resolution, but if you would allow Mr. Trueva to give you a little bit more information on this merger, maybe that'll give Mr. Villalobos an opportunity to determine how we should proceed.
Yes, please.
I would just advise of the issue, so...
Okay.
...no resolution is present before the commission, but I'd be very happy to prepare one non-procton, the approval of tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
We, JEMCO is Garcia Pinoza Mayares and Company. It's a firm pretty much the same size that Rodriguez Truva and Company was. We've known each other for a while, and we both felt the need for a larger firm, and it was, I think, each firm, we were as far as we could in growth, and we had a vision to create a larger organization... as we could in growth. And we had a vision to create a larger organization that would allow us to provide more and better services. We started our conversations in January of 2017. We signed our agreement and we moved into new space. And we got new space on June 30th. We signed our partnership agreement on June 30th with an effective date of January 1st, 2019. So I thought I would, we would remain Rodriguez Trueva and Company, but for insurance purposes, they, we have, we cannot sign as our old firms. We have a new partnership that's called Garcia Pinoza Mayares Rodriguez Trueva and Company, LLP. And we became a firm on January 2nd. So what we've done with our other municipal clients is provide that letter. I don't believe that Doral did anything. At least, if they did it, they didn't tell us. And Miami Lakes, they had something like what you're having, a discussion. And was there a resolution? I know the attorney had started to advise them to perhaps have a resolution, and I think something went through in their consent agenda. And I can certainly find out. I don't believe, basically, we have an engagement letter with the city. It's a contract. The name of the contract changes for the new entity. And it's a legal, you know, does the resolution or those acceptance by you, I mean, we have an agreement and now we just have a new name under the agreement.
Right. And we do have a. Madam Manager, we do have a contract until September 30th, 2022. So that's why the agenda reads possible request for resolution. I didn't know how to proceed. And so, but we felt it was important that the information was made available to the Mayor and City Commission and that we entered it on the record of this, part of the permanent record of the city.
I apologize that I had to go out to get a personal call, but I have a question. Your new company is going to be GEMRT?
It's Garcia Pinoza Mayares Rodriguez Trueva and Company, LLP.
In other words, the new company would be all of the, all those numbers?
GemRT.
So it would have to be a resolution approving this names in here, okay?
So we would simply be accepting the new name of the company?
Approve the transaction and have the new resolution confirming the fact that Rodriguez Trueva is going to be this company now and that you approved it.
Are there any questions from the table? So we just give you our blessing to proceed with the resolution. Is that what you need from us this evening, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
We are requesting a resolution, but the resolution itself is not on the agenda. We could bring it for ratification at the next commission meeting.
Okay.
Anyone opposed to that?
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is what we do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, sir.
Now back to the order of the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Good night, good night.
Bye, Jerry. Thank you, bye, Carlos. With item five, public comments, none this evening. Item six, report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. There is a written report in your agenda packet this evening, and it contemplates or it refers to the upcoming summer camp 2019. I can't believe we're already talking about this. Registration is now open. We have attached a summer camp program containing registration and general information. There's also a schedule for all the field trips that have been booked. And all this information will be advertised in the city of West Miami website, Facebook page, and our pamphlets are being distributed at the center to the parents, to the after-school care parents. We intend to also offer copies of the flyer to the schools so that they are made aware and can inform their parents that the city has a summer camp program. Our park director has made arrangements for all the field trip transportation as well, and he has staff ready to go. The staff will be in place once we know the number of children because of the ratios that need to be met. The staff is trained. They have been with us for many years. Most of them are returning staffers. And the leaders, the actual group leaders, are all certified Miami-Dade County Public School teachers. So they're pretty much all familiar faces at the park. I've asked the park director to coordinate with Miami-Dade County Public Schools regarding our interest in placing some of our interns in the summer camp program. There is a program that is funded by the Children's Trust in partnership with Miami-Dade County Public Schools where they pay for six weeks' worth of summer camp internship opportunities to sophomores and incoming sophomores, I'm sorry, incoming juniors and seniors. And so, once we have a coordinator assigned to the city, we can proceed in taking applications or accepting the school, the high school students that they send over our way for participation in the program. I actually asked them to inquire whether we could get an intern, a paid intern, at City Hall to help out with some of the clerical functions for six weeks. I think it would be an extra body assisting us with the phone, distribution of mail, copies, scanning, and just general clerical matters.
Didn't we take advantage of that one year?
We have been taking advantage of it for three years. But obviously, this is a grant through the Children's Trust, and we have to see how and in what terms and conditions the grant is being awarded this year.
Okay.
But we're on it. The next item in my report is a citywide traffic study. As you know, we have, the city held our first public involvement workshop yesterday afternoon as required by the grant. Miami-Dade County was represented, and the city had a great turnout, and will continue to work with the engineers and our county officials to complete the grant within the allotted six months. The next item in my report is the passport office. The city opened bids for the office expansion project aimed at improving functionality for the front office to accommodate the flow of passports. Out of the 11 requests made by potential contractors, only one bid was received. This is the second time, Mr. Penna, that the city receives bids for this project. Sealed bids were opened by the city clerk, witnessed by the manager. The bid from Conbuild came in at $259,558, clearly over and above the amount that we have designated for the passport expansion project. The city engineers, Mr. Penna and I, will be participating in a meeting on Tuesday of next week to discuss our options for the project. Therefore, we will abstain at this meeting from making a recommendation until we have an opportunity to revisit our options and the best course of action that we would like to bring to you as a recommendation. The next item is pending projects. As part of that meeting scheduled with the engineers for Tuesday of next week, we are going to go over all of our pending projects, which include FERTAPS, the wellness center that is currently in design stage, the city's potable water system, and the passport office. So hopefully, we can have a good, long hour and a half, two-hour meeting and sort of put all these projects in perspective. We will have a report and a follow-up for the Mayor and City Commission possibly as soon as May 15th, at your next commission meeting. Census 2020 is coming up next year, and I cannot stress the importance of the upcoming census. And I know the mayor and the vice mayor have been actively participating, Mayor Rodriguez and Vice Mayor Suarez, in the upcoming census process. We've scheduled a meeting, I actually scheduled the meeting this afternoon with Marilyn Stevens from the 2020 census for May 14th. We are pending her confirmation. We would like to hear from her what role our city should play with the upcoming and very important census for our community. Census means the possibility of increased revenue sharing and future allocations of money coming to our city. And we want to make sure that we put out the message that every person should count in the city of West Miami, especially with the growth that we have had over the last few years. The next item is Freebie. Mayor Rodriguez, Mr. Penna, and I met with Representative of Freebie a couple of weeks ago, and we've invited them to make a presentation at an upcoming meeting. However, we need to see how we can introduce Freebie from a fiscal angle, using the 20% transit allocation with the use of the half-cent penny tax, we know that as a surtax dollars, and if and how Freebie can interact with our hourly loop system or in addition to that system or by collapsing the loop system. We still, we're not in a level of comfort to bring a recommendation to you until we know what the dollars are going to entail here. So I spoke to a gentleman from Freebie, Harry Gottlieb, this afternoon. He understands, and they are going to try to also work out some numbers for us so we know exactly how to deal with this and when the right time to bring them before the City Commission would be. Last but not least is the upcoming Mother's Day celebration at the Community Center. You all have been provided with a calendar. Next Friday, May 10th, the City of West Miami Community Center will be celebrating Mother's Day next door, and so hopefully, you all can make it. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to take any questions or give you any clarification on any of these items.
Thank you.
No questions?
The Freebie, what you're negotiating, what you're discussing with Freebie, are you discussing both on-demand and fixed routes?
That is correct.
Anything else? Any other questions? Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item seven, report of the City Attorney.
There's no report by the City Attorney.
Thank you.
Item eight, report of City Engineers, none this evening. Item nine, committee reports, report of the Mayor, follow-up report by Mayor Ronda Rodriguez on details for Memorial Day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, before I get into that, I do want to take a moment to thank Commissioners, Vice Mayor, for being in attendance at the workshop. I think it was very, as the manager said, very well attended and an excellent workshop. So thank you all for being there and being attentive and listening to our residents' concerns. I was very happy with the workshop and how it went. So thank you, thank you for being there. Okay, on to Memorial Day. It's going to be on Friday, May 24th, 11:00 a.m. We'll be placing the wreath in front of City Hall, and we will have a presentation of colors by our West Miami Police Department color guard. We were trying to get an officer to play taps at the small ceremony we're having, but unfortunately, they were unavailable. We just talked to Carlos today, Deputy Chief Avila, and he was unable to have this, apparently, he's going out of town. He's going to actually be tomorrow at the cemetery, but he can't be here for that. So the placing of the wreath, the presentation of colors, I'm sure the chief might have a few words that day. So I invite you all to be there. I'll be there, and then we'll continue planning for, hopefully, something a little more for next year. I do want to continue to enhance our Memorial Day event. So we'll try to do a little bit more for next year. And also, tomorrow, we have, as I mentioned, chief, the, I'm sorry, the placing of flags at our fallen officers cemetery at 10:00.
10:00 a.m. At the cemetery, it's right off of Sunset and Palmetto Expressway. We'll be there for Officer Trivel and Officer Delphorn. And then tomorrow night at 7:00 at Tropical Park is the countywide police memorial.
Perfect. I believe we all got calendars, so if you can attend, that would be wonderful.
For those of you that have not attended the ceremony at Tropical Park, I encourage you to at least once to go there. It is a very moving ceremony, and you can feel the energy at that ceremony. It's sad, but it's a reality that, you know, that our officers and their families are hit with. And so I invite you to consider attending.
Thank you, yes. I am definitely going to try. So if anyone else can, that would be wonderful. Okay, so that is it for my report, Madam Manager. Next item on the agenda?
Yes, item 10. Any other, I apologize, any other committee wants to report?
Any reports?
No.
No?
Item 10, under unfinished business. Item 10A, follow-up FEMA Hurricane Irma reimbursement by Office of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. Late today, I actually sent an email to the state representative that is dealing with our FEMA projects, Amanda Campton. You were copied on that email. We are also being scrutinized by a company or contractor that FEMA has hired to go through the projects. On the one end, if you go on the computer, our projects are fully documented in the official grants portal for FEMA. And they're fully documented, and they show that we are obligated, meaning that they are in the process of processing our reimbursement. I think some of the members of the City Commission have seen me or heard me talking to FEMA, the FEMA contractors that are based out of Washington, D.C., I believe. The company is KPMG. If you ask them, they're going through a review process, and they're holding up our reimbursement process. So late today, I contacted Amanda Campton. I copied all of you on that email so that you can be made aware of the effort that we're trying to, we're trying to determine if our projects are obligated and they're ready to be reimbursed, why are we being scrutinized by an outside vendor on our load tickets? And so, obviously, they need to justify their existence, but that's costing us and your taxpayers money. So please understand that we're doing everything that we can to expedite our reimbursement, but our hands are tied. That being said, we went through the effort with City National Bank, and we have successfully obtained a letter granting the city of West Miami an extension on that credit line for the balance of $1,409,000 until September 30th of this year, which buys us a few more months before we actually have to go through an entire renewal process. So we've been able to save the city approximately $15,000 from what Mr. Villalobos and I have assessed in terms of bond counsel and the city attorney's time in relation to a new closing. So we hope that the, that time is on our side and that we are reimbursed by September 30th. This will be the last time that City National extends this courtesy to us, but we're happy at least. We'll be able to save the city $15,000 and start applying pressure on FEMA. Again, I just don't understand what the holdup is. So the copy of the extension letter or the, yes, the short-term extension maturity date letter is in your pocket, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this issue.
Madam Manager, I'd like you to thank City National on our behalf for granting this extension and saving us that $15,000. That's not a drop in the bucket, so I certainly appreciate. That's not a drop in the bucket, so I certainly appreciate that, that they're understanding the situation that we're in, it's kind of out of our hands.
And I have, I've sent them an email. There are three individuals that have been key to this successful second go-around with this extension to the credit line and we have sent out an email, Terecita at the local branch here, Terecita Rodriguez. We have Dallas Peña with the South Miami office who was involved from the beginning and Sarah Menendez who's a vice president and she jumped in at the 11th hour and spoke to the underwriting department and spoke to the big bosses at City National and was able to take our case and state our case with the higher-ups at City National, so all we need to do is, we need to stay on top of these FEMA individuals and if within the next 30 days or so, maybe we can, I'm going to bring this to the Managers Association and maybe we can form a coalition of managers that are in the same set of circumstances and try to unite our voices and try to schedule a meeting with the state FEMA representatives or someone that will listen to us seriously. I am advised that we're not the only ones that are waiting for our reimbursement.
Well, power in numbers, so if you can get with those other managers, perhaps that might be another tack, another way to try to persuade FEMA that everyone needs their money.
Yep, agreed.
Certainly not by opposition to be a policymaker, but I think that my suggestion would be also to go through the political spectrum and try to contact our federal representatives and state that this is costing us how much a month?
This has cost us so far about $62,000 in taxpayer dollars in interest, closing costs, and this is money that we are not being reimbursed by FEMA.
So FEMA has approved it and they have, I understand that this is not the first company that is reviewing whatever had been reviewed three or four times before.
Right. Today I was advised by, Caffair is one of the gentlemen that I'm dealing with, that a new one, we've had about 10 representatives, if not 12, and now they're saying that they are uploading the debris tickets. We've done that 10, 12 times.
And in addition, I think that this is a way that the manager, I know that this is not politically correct, but this is a way to justify somebody's contract.
Absolutely, and I told them that today.
What sounds like it's just plain ridiculous to me, how they're stringing everyone along.
The longer they stay on the job, the more money they make.
So Mr. Attorney, what did you, I'm sorry, what did you recommend or suggest that we do?
Just write our congressman and our senator and everybody else that we can have at hand, the President of the Senate, the President of the Speaker of the House, everybody else. I guess, you know, we are at the mercy of some bureaucrat that is just making, spending FEMA's money that should be spent in service to the public.
And reimbursing us.
Please.
Did you say that there's been 10 to 12 different companies?
Representatives, I don't know whether companies. First, FEMA has assigned a good 10 project managers to us and then what happens is they come in, they get acquainted with the project, they stay on for 30, 45 days and all of a sudden we get an email like from TJ Theodore and he says, "I've been relocated to another disaster, so-and-so, Mr. Corey is going to come in and be your new project liaison." So we go back to square one.
And they start doing the same thing over again?
Yes, sir.
So they're basically ripping off the federal government?
Yes.
I think maybe we should point that out. Maybe that will raise some red flags and someone with some real leadership can maybe make something happen.
Is KPMG the first firm, outside contractor that's contacted you?
They, I believe they are, yes, yes.
Well, certainly can hurt what the City Attorney recommended, that we write letters and contact Washington. I can't see how that would hurt, do you all agree?
Absolutely.
So...
I think the City Manager needs the consensus of the...
I do.
So we have the full support of the Commission.
For the letters.
But I think that this is going too far. As I say, every time that appoints somebody else, it's more money that it costs the people of the state of Florida and the people of the United States of America and they do run out of money. And even though they come again to Congress and they ask for more money, I mean, last year we had Puerto Rico and then we had Central Florida and everybody says, "Well, we have to attend to them." I think that we should be, this has been how many years now?
This is going, 18 months, as of the end of March, we're 18 months into the project.
That's why the Army pays $500 for a hammer.
The Army pays what?
$500 for a hammer.
Mr. Attorney, I...
Yes, sir.
The swamp is not dry yet. That's a problem.
Does anyone else have anything else to add to this?
So if you all...
Yeah, Mr. Attorney, I agree. Is there anyone opposed to giving our City Manager the okay to proceed with these letters and reaching out?
What the manager have to do is send every day 10 or 20 emails.
That we just have to tell her, we have to tell her to go, so we're telling her...
Every day, send 20 emails.
You know, no, don't send letters, because you know, letters are different. Letters are something physical.
It's a record.
They gotta open and they gotta look at and they gotta handle. An email, they get so many of those that it's not distinctive.
I agree.
You have our blessing, Madam Manager, to proceed.
Thank you, I'll go to work on the letter tomorrow and...
You have to tire them so they get rid of you. If you don't write and you don't ask for something, they forget about you. You call 10 times every day and they say, "Let's get out of..."
And we do call the state representatives and the FEMA representatives, but I think somebody higher up needs to, I think in the letter, I'm also going to contact the national representative for FEMA, the actual director of FEMA.
Perhaps he sees the news media.
Well, I think that we should send this, a letter to our senator.
And our Congresswoman as well.
Relating to him what is happening, so maybe he takes notice and says, "Oh my God, why are they doing this work over and over again? This is an abuse" and maybe he can flex his muscles and political muscles and maybe he'll make something happen.
Agreed. So Madam Manager, please proceed.
I will be working on that letter tomorrow.
Hopefully, the Senator can get a letter from us.
Sure. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 10B, Follow-up on Water, Sewer Owner, Tenant and Customer Deposits to Include Revised Do's and Don'ts in the Revisions of the City's Welcome Packet, Requested by Commissioner Juan Blanes, Report by the Office of the City Manager, Amendments to Be Submitted by the City Attorney, Do's and Don'ts, Office of the City Manager.
Thank you. I'll be as brief as I can. Mr. Villalobos and I met yesterday morning at the office and we went over a couple of pending issues that have been an ongoing concern and I went back and I checked with our finance team and the water department clerk and the fact is, is that we are doing better in collecting water bills from tenants that are moving out of the city. We have had a, we've taken a more proactive approach in shutting down water when it is not paid without giving any additional time and so that has helped us. And when a tenant leaves, when our exposure used to be $500, $600, $700, we are now looking at an average exposure of anywhere from $180, $150, $200 in those cases where tenants move out and leave a water bill. What we have done since is we have increased, we increased several years ago, the tenant deposits to $250 and that money is not released until such time the pending, the amount to be collected by the city for the water service is collected. So we're being a little bit more proactive, firmer if you would, in staying up with this issue. That being said, we took a look at the application form and I believe that there's going to be a lot of owners that are going to be frowning upon having to become responsible for the water for their tenants and it's going to be difficult getting in touch with owners who do not reside in Miami-Dade County or have difficulty accessing or sending us the money prior to leasing these properties and then these tenants would be deprived of having water service and that could be potentially a matter of litigation for the city. So rather than go that route, we spoke and we spoke to Commissioner Blanes yesterday briefly about this, the City Attorney and I, rather than going that route, I would actually ask you to consider increasing deposits a little bit higher for tenants only. Owner-occupied properties are not affected by this. This would be, I mean, if somebody and Commissioner Blanes, you know, we talked about it, these people are paying $2,500 rent on a, in a single family, on average, a single-family home, I would venture to tell you that they would be able to pay a $300 deposit for water service and I feel that the city would be a little bit more protective and so we would ask the City Attorney if you believe that it's, that you can agree to this or that you would entertain it, we could ask the City Attorney to prepare an ordinance increasing the deposit for rental properties.
This is what I would propose and let me go back in a little history. The first time that this was addressed was in 2001, so that was eight years ago. Then we revisited the issue and we had an ordinance, given the administration the option to contract with the owners only. The problem is, and I drafted an ordinance to the effect, to that effect, and it took some doing because in the state of Florida, I haven't found too many cities that do that. In the nearby neighbors, only the city of Davie has this type of ordinance whereby the owner is the one that signs the contract. Now, the issue is that the city of Davie is a lot larger than we are, they have more money than we do and they have a larger staff. So what the city of Davie does is that they have a dual process whereby the tenant receives the bill and then the same bill is processed by another clerk and is sent out to the owner. So you have the same bill sent out twice, once to the owner and one to the tenant. So that would be rather expensive and upon reviewing that issue with the City Manager, she recommended that we stay like we are right now, that we have the option at some point to negotiate that with the owners, but at this point, to make it mandatory to have the owner sign the contract with the city for water services, it would be too taxing to the city. Commissioner Suarez and I also discussed this issue and he was very right. I mean, if the owner is the only one responsible, well, the tenant would waste as much water as they want and they have no responsibility. The issue is, in the state of Florida, there's a statute and a lot of case law that says that if the tenant wastes water, you cannot go and lend the property to the owner of the property. So the most practical thing is to have, number one, since the deposit right now is...
$250 for tenants.
$250 is through an ordinance. We have to have an ordinance reviewing $250 to $300. Now, what I proposed is that in the same ordinance, it is, the City Manager is authorized to decrease or increase by resolution and not by an ordinance, that takes more time and it would be meaning more expenditure of money in publication and so on and so forth. So the ordinance that I proposed is, number one, keeping the status quo like it is and increasing, as the manager suggested, to $300 and also authorizing the City Manager forthwith from now on to have the option by resolution to increase or decrease the water deposit.
Mr. Blanes?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it $350 that we had agreed?
We're looking at the amount anywhere from 300 to 350.
We have to remember, not only do we pay water coming in, but we have to pay for water coming out.
That is correct.
So the bills are a lot larger than they used to be. So I think if we're going to raise it, we might as well raise it $100 and make it $350.
Yes.
And, you know, the reason why I wanted to institute this ordinance that the attorney had crafted back in '01 was that, you know, it would make the property owner now have skin in the game. You know, most of the issues that affect the quality of life of residents here in West Miami are due, not mainly, but a lot of the times from people that come and rent. These people are transient people and, you know, they come, they stay six months, a year, two years, and then again, you have some really good tenants that stay here with us for years and years and years and they don't cause any issues or any problems. But I would, I would hope that we could somehow involve the property owner and inform him of all, of his responsibilities, because it's pretty obvious that when we have all this code enforcement cases, you know, with renters, the property owner, you know, is not around. He's not around to make sure that the, his tenants are abiding by the rules, by our ordinances and by the laws. So I was hoping that somehow we could involve them, because I think that in the long run, it would help, it would help, you know, mainly our quality of life will be better, because maybe now, you know, the property owner will be more involved, paying attention more to what their tenants are doing and not doing and the code enforcement officer will be relieved, you know, so, you know, his attention can be placed, you know, where it's really needed. So, you know, I mean, I guess what the administration has decided they want to do is best, I think that if we raise it, it needs to be, you know, at least $350, you know, why just raise it 50? I mean, what's $50?
I agree, I agree.
Raise it to 350 if you're going to do anything, I mean...
I agree, I mean, if they're paying that amount of rent for these homes, obviously, and that would put, that would secure, it would put us in a more secure situation that if they leave, we have something to hang on to and that would be their deposit.
The other thing is...
And if they pay their bill, they get their deposit back. That's the way it should be.
Is there motion about that?
No, we're still in discussion, but I don't think we need a motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner, please continue.
The other thing that I was hoping that could be given to the property owner when, if we were going to do what was initially thought of, was giving the property owner, you know, a handbook, you know, of all the do's and don'ts. A lot of, a lot of people that rent here are people that rent and it's a financial business proposition for them, you know, because they're obviously in a position where they're making money. So, you know, they're, they're basically not here, they're absentee landowners. So I was hoping that, you know, this handbook will be given to them and at least they can see it and they can peruse through it and see, you know, that, you know, they are ultimately responsible for their property. So, you know, hopefully where they would, you know, feel like they got more skin in the game and they would be more responsible, but if we do this, then that's not going to happen. But again, it will alleviate us from having to pay, you know, large water bills that have been left behind.
Right, to have to absorb the amount of money that they leave behind, so I think raising the deposit would be the way to go. I did check with other cities, Madam Mayor and I checked with the Managers Association. I don't know of any city in Miami-Dade County that has opted to decline... I don't know of any city in Miami-Dade County that has opted to decline to contract service with a tenant and/or the owner. So we would be a first, and I wouldn't
Okay. So first, Commissioner Blanes, I want to thank you.
We're talking about different things. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're talking about different things. Number one is whether or not we're going to raise the deposit.
Right.
That being said, let's leave all the other issues aside, and let's discuss it separately, because we might get in trouble. Because we're supposed to have a single-issue subject on each item, so we don't want to mix the apple and oranges there.
Okay, so then 10B is simply a discussion on whether we are going to approve the city manager to raise the deposit. Is that correct? Is anyone opposed to the city manager having to leave way to raise or lower the deposit as discussed?
For tenants.
For the tenant, yes.
This will be sort of a first reading, sorry, step one.
Right, this is just the discussion.
Because I need to
Discussion.
I need to draft the ordinance for first reading.
Okay, so 11B is simply the discussion, which we're having prior to requesting the resolution.
The amendment to the ordinance on the first reading.
Is there any, anyone opposed? Okay, proceed. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, let me just say one thing. I was going to say, Commissioner Blanes, I want to thank you. You've been on top of this for quite some time, the ins and outs, do's and don'ts of the city, and looking out for our quality of life. I know that's been big on your, on your agenda, and I appreciate that, I do. And as well as, I'm sure, our residents do as well. So thank you for your tenacity and staying on top of this.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
We're, you know, we're a tranquil, quiet, peaceful, clean, safe city. I've been living here for 34 years. That's the reason why I live here. And I don't want to see it change. And, you know, there are certain things that we need to do every once in a while and adjust to make sure that that remains.
Yes, sir.
Because that's why, you know, that's what, that's why we sit here. This is what it's all about. You know, everything else is just, you know, politics. So I'm, you know, I'm all about quality of life. I, hopefully, I will be bringing other things to the table that will help code enforcement, you know, maintain that.
I would respectfully request, Mr. Commissioner, when you do that, give me enough time in order to do that, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I do have a question, Madam Clerk.
...will be 48 years in the city.
But we cannot be on the night, talking about the same thing?
No, no, no. No, I'm still talking about unfinished business, 10B.
There's one follow-up agenda item, as requested by Commissioner Blanes,
Okay.
...which we'd like to report on. We've expanded our city regulations, which we've called do's and don'ts for
That's what I was going to ask you.
A long time.
I'm seeing it here in my package, and we didn't talk about it.
Right.
Let me put it this way, advice, because the regulation already exists.
Right.
Okay.
So we have expanded on that, and what we've done now is, and I prepared a packet that's being updated as we speak, of all the information that is given to all owners or tenants who move into our city. This is done, we give it, we give this welcome packet so that they can get acquainted. And so what we have done now is started to include the do's and don'ts list. We provided this to Commissioner Blanes. I think he's read them through, and there's a page and a half worth of, you know, things that you're supposed to do as a resident and things that you're not supposed to do. And when in doubt, call the city. In addition to what renting your property means in terms of property taxes, which was also a follow-up item, as you have discussed the issue of short-term rentals. And so Mr. Viallovo's brought copies of the Miami-Dade County pamphlet from what their online system, and this is something they usually send to us every year in the taxes. But a tenant does not receive a tax bill. Usually, the tax bill goes to the owner unless the owner has not properly recorded his property as a rental property. So we're putting the renters on notice and the owners on notice that there are consequences in terms of financial implications when you rent your property beyond a 30-day window. I also provided to you all the other forms that we've included over time, just for special events, our hurricane preparedness, right off of the National Oceanic website. There's a packet on the hourly loop system. There's a pamphlet on the mayor and city commission, which is being revised due to the resignation of the former mayor and the welcoming of our new city commissioner. So we're working on all these forms. Mr. Quintana is working on those revisions, and we hope to have a clean packet for everybody in the coming days.
Madam Manager, this is a pretty comprehensive welcome packet. We can't, we certainly cannot ever have anyone say we haven't given them enough information. So this is quite comprehensive, and I thank you.
You're welcome.
They don't know what they don't know, so we're telling them.
Yeah, in conversation with Mr. Pena, Mr. Pena was suggesting that one thing that we can possibly do is, when that tenant comes in to open up the water bill, I mean, to open up the water account, whoever helps him do that, we can maybe hopefully train that person to have a, like a one-on-one and go over the main topics on the do's and don'ts, like, you know, like things that are, that are pretty obvious. You can't have a commercial vehicle. You can't play loud music after 11 o'clock. You, you know, the things that really would bother the other residents. That way, you know, that tenant that opens up that water account walks away, like, you know, with a thought in mind that, well, you know, I've been, I've been forewarned, I've been, I'm doing something wrong. And if they do have a commercial vehicle, or if they're do gonna, if they are do, going to do something that is against our laws, maybe they'll think about it twice, and maybe they won't rent. And we'll save
Don't say that, please.
We'll save
I know.
This is hypothetically speaking, Mr. Attorney. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not discriminating against anybody or anything, please. I mean, you know, that's why we sit here. We need to talk about these things that affect the resident, you know. I mean, renting, you know, I have rental property, there's nothing wrong with that, but you have to be a responsible landowner when you rent to tenants. Is there something wrong with saying that or wanting to, you know, all our issues and all our problems with code enforcement are mainly that? You know, because, you know, when, when we have residents that have issues, you know, they're, you know, they're, the code enforcement issues are taken care of readily, because, you know, they have skin in the game. They live here. But when you do not live here, you're a, you know, absentee landowner, chances are that you're not going to take care of your property the way that you should. So that's what I'm trying to, to accomplish here, but
So if I'm understanding you, Commissioner, when we hand out this, like I said, this is very comprehensive, this packet to, to the person that's coming to open the water account, you're recommending that we just, whoever's doing that, just highlight some of the do's and don'ts and the important things that that person needs to know, like taking an extra moment with them? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Pena is the code enforcement director, and I think that he would, you know, know exactly, you know, which ones to point out that could actually save us a lot of grief.
So maybe asking Mr. Pena to, to be a part, you know, just make an appointment with him or sit down with him? What is it yours?
No, all he needs to do is just get with the city manager and whoever's going to open up the water account, you know, pull out the do's and don'ts,
Okay.
And with a magic marker, say, look, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, and you can't do that. And, you know
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
You can't open up
This has been ongoing now for, for over a year. The, the purpose of the do's and don'ts is to make, obviously, somebody familiar with our specific rules,
Uh huh.
The ones that we put more emphasis on.
Right.
So my suggestion to the Commissioner was, for the staff downstairs, whenever they hand out one of these books, not just to give them the book and say, here,
Okay.
But to actually pull out the do's and don'ts and go through that list so that they actually understand it and read it, and if they have any questions, they could be answered. Because sometimes people move in and they may own a truck from a previous location and bring it over here where it's not allowed. In fact, this week, I had a lady that came in, and she had rented the house of somebody else, and she's an absentee landlord, and she got a notice from us, and she actually came and paid the violation fee, but she thought that, that, she wasn't aware that they were keeping a commercial vehicle on the property. Once we showed her the actual picture of the vehicle on the property, she was shocked. And I go, usually when tenants stick it to the back of the yard, because they know it's illegal to begin with. And the issue was resolved. She asked them to remove it.
I like the idea. Madam Manager, please.
May I? I have, and with all due respect to Juan, you know, that, that we have a longstanding relationship. But I think all of you were at City Hall yesterday afternoon at a point in time where we had wall-to-wall people, the young ladies, and I want to say young ladies, because I think we're all young in spirit, processed 84 passports yesterday. They left the office at 10:30 in the evening. Madam Mayor, you know that I went for sandwiches, and I brought them back dinner after our meeting. I left the office at shortly after 10:00. And I got to tell you that if that, if that is the way to go, whether we expand and become more personalized and maybe have a guest services department as part of the water department, I would have to make some restructuring and maybe pull from Mr. Pena's staff and bring a passport clerk up front, which is the idea, there's one in training, and separate Eliana completely from the counter, which she shouldn't be there in the first place, because she's dealing with two systems. And I, you know, eventually, when we have this workshop, all this has got to be brought out to the light. We have two water department systems. One is the Itron, and one is the Easy Reader. And these two systems do not feed off of each other, they don't interact with each other. And in order for her to publish or print out a batch of water bills, which consists of about 550 accounts every month, and we do three tiers of billing system where there's a bill going out every month, she has to do manual input for one, and the other one, she's got to get it off the, the new system. We have not been able to complete the, complete the conversion of that system, because we're going to need about $1.2 million to do that. And so as it is, she's taxed with deposits, refunds of deposits, delinquent notices, turn-ons and turn-offs, and we would have to ask her to become more of a personalized service. So the, while the idea is noble, I think that realistically speaking, we don't have anybody, and I have to tell you that many a times, residents call Public Works, and Juan is not back there, Martin is not there, there's nobody there.
Commissioner, if I may, I think we're getting off, we're getting off topic here.
So is it a great idea?
I want to rein it back in.
Is it a great idea to have a guest service department maybe combined with a water department? Because that's when you, you know, you're able to talk to these people. I think we can, and we can train a person, but certainly, it's going to take some, call it overhaul of the existing resources that, that we have.
Okay, I think this is something we can obviously continue talking about, it's not something we need to adopt tonight or
No. When we will make every effort, but I want you to be conscientious of the fact
Understood, understood.
What you saw last night is, is our reality.
Most definitely. Um, yes.
How many water accounts do we open up in a day, average?
No, in a day, no, but in a month, maybe 20, 15, maybe 18.
So how long would it take to hand the tenant this?
We do that.
And pull out the do's and don'ts and say, oh, by the way, this, 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 you can't do.
It all depends on the questions that the people, the new residents may have, maybe half hour.
It might take a minute or more.
Maybe half an hour? If, if we're supposed to go
No, no, this, this, this.
Yes, the welcome packet.
Whatever it is that they do, they do. The welcome packet is just handing it to them.
We do that now.
And saying, here. So how long does that take?
That doesn't take long now.
All I'm saying is, you pull out the do's and don'ts and say, look, by the way, please read the do's and don'ts, and by the way, consequently, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know, highlight whatever Mr. Pena suggests, you know, with a magic marker. That takes 30 seconds. I, I'm not asking that we have a welcome, you know, party for each
No, no, I, I thought that the intent was to get
I don't want to reinvent the wheel here.
I understand that.
This is just a very simple transaction that will take less than a minute.
Okay. I'm sure, like I said, I, I'm sure we can
You're talking about, you're talking about having a welcome, what did you call it?
Guest services.
Guest services.
Something like that.
Like Disney World.
Concierge services.
I, I do, I do believe that between the front office and public services, I'm sure we can work something out along these lines.
Just information.
Just a thought, just a thought. So we're going to, we're going to leave that there. We're, I think we're finished with that topic. We will, Commissioner, you can continue talking with, with staff and with public services, and I'm, I'm sure there's something that, that the two can work out together. I'm confident.
This is simple.
I'm confident.
This is pulling, pulling, pulling the do's and don'ts out and saying, look, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do that. It takes 30 seconds.
I'm confident
Now they walk away, you know, with, with the knowledge that, oh, wow, I can't do this, I can't do that.
We'll, we'll work it out between the front office and public services. Commissioner, yes.
Yolanda.
Sir.
I have to understand, we have the plans to expand
Yes, sir.
The passport area, so we don't have to get a critical problem now. In a couple of months, we will be expanded, that area. So the problem will be solved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So this is not the time to create another problem.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's get back to the agenda. I think we've, we've pretty much covered this as much as necessary. So let's get back to the agenda. Madam Manager, next item, please.
Item 11, under New Business Agenda Items, item 11A, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami repealing a part of Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 133, Code 1965 prohibiting display of articles of merchandise of, or any other device displayed outside of the premises being licensed within the city of West Miami to include but not limited to signs or mannequins, and repealing Section 135, display outside structure prohibited from being repetitive, providing for effective date, providing codification, providing for severability. This item is sponsored by Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a first reading, no discussion. I need a motion.
Motion.
Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, have your vote. Commissioner Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Size zero, item passes, and the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance will be, take place on June 5, 2019, at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item.
Item 1011B, selection of dates for the city of West Miami, 2019-20 city budgets, required public hearings by the office of the city manager.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. In reviewing the trimmed calendar and our required public hearings for the upcoming budget, and not conflicting with Miami-Dade County Public Schools and Board of County Commissioners, we propose that you consider entertaining Tuesday, September 3, as your tentative budget hearing date, and that is the day after the long weekend.
Is everyone okay with that?
We do have, we do have a commission meeting scheduled for the 4th. However, the Miami-Dade County Public School System has their final budget hearing on that date, and because it conflicts with the law, we can't have it on that date.
So we had on the 3, we cancel the 4th.
That would be our recommendation.
Is there anyone opposed to that? Set.
Thank you. And the final budget hearing, the same, we would recommend that, because we have advertising requirements, that that meeting be held on September 18 at 7:30 PM, the final budget. That means your budget ad would appear on Sunday, September 15, in the Neighbor's Section of the Miami Herald, which is the publication that we need to meet.
Is there anyone opposed to that date?
No for me.
We'll keep those agenda, those two agendas light.
I was, Commissioner, you said no, or you're okay with it?
No, no, I know. I would be out of town September 19.
That's the 18, September 18.
18, I would be out of town after the 15. 18, I would be out of town after the 15.
Do we need a quorum for that meeting? No. I mean, do we need a...
You need majority vote?
Majority, I mean, majority, that's what I meant.
Yes, you do.
So, Commissioner, with your, with your approval, we'll continue.
It's all right for me, but the problem is that I would be not here.
We continue with September 18?
You can't.
We have to have a budget adopted.
Because it's, we don't have a lot of choices, correct?
No, that's correct. You have to stay within the TRIM guidelines.
So it has to be that date.
And everything is predicated on days and you have to have an adopted budget by September 25 or your budget rolls back to last year.
So then it has to be that date?
Yes.
Yes, September 18?
Well, in order to accommodate advertisement guidelines and be in compliance with Miami-Dade County School Board and the Board of County Commission hearings, those are the dates that we are proposing. Because we have to allow our time, some time to make changes after the tentative budget hearing, if any are suggested by the Commission or instructed for us to work with, we have to take those changes into consideration.
So Commissioner Blanes, you're okay with the 18? Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, September 18 it is.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
Item 11C, discussion regarding the 2019 City of West Miami Fourth of July celebration and recommendation to award fireworks display, Office of the City Manager and Director of Public Works.
Thank you. The Fourth of July is right around the corner. I know that Mr. Penna has made an effort to contact our local vendors here regarding the Fourth of July display, the display of fireworks, and I'll yield to him so that he can speak to you on the issue of who's responded to the bid or to the request for proposals and what we have available to us as of this date. And I also like to point out for the record that Mr. Villalobos and I spoke today and Mr. Villalobos would like the city to follow the procurement process by either a sealed bid, but Mr. Penna advises that that is not possible because of the vendors that he has been in contact with. So if he could, if we could yield to a report from him and then we'll have a way to, you know, possible recommendation on this.
Mr. Penna, please.
Mayor, the company that we have now that has done it for the past 15 years by the name of AdFire originally did submit a bid back then and we have just been renewing the contract on a yearly basis. At this point, to go out and secure bids for it, most companies that are reputable are already committed for the Fourth of July and don't have the availability of personnel to do the pyrotechnics. So therefore, my recommendation is to continue with them this year and if Mr. Villalobos feels that we need a new procurement request for 2020, then we start August 2020 because most of the vendors have told us that they start that process the month after the Fourth of July every year. Then let's just go ahead and call them a single source so we comply.
Mr. Penna, that meets your approval, single source?
At this point, they are the only ones that are offering us the same cost as we've paid before and at the same time, the other person that did bother to submit a proposal was $1,000 a minute.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
$1,000 a minute. And we do 20 minutes, so that would be $20,000.
Can we make sure that we, that we try to bid it out? I mean, I know you said it's a long time in advance, it was a month from July 4.
That's correct.
It will start, so can we do that? I think you already mentioned it, but can we make sure we do that?
August.
After this July 4?
Sure.
This is the same company we used last year?
The same company we used for 15 years.
We have been using for a couple of years, right?
15 years.
And you recommend that company?
Oh, yes.
Did they raise the rate from last year?
Nope.
And I remember a couple of years back...
We asked them to raise the count. We used to start, we were at $7,500 and we raised, we asked them to raise it to $10,000 due to the donations we have received from the commercial...
When you say count, you mean amount of firework quantity?
The amount of shells that are fired.
Okay, okay. Okay?
I make a motion.
Taking the, taking the attorney's recommendation of naming it single source, is there anyone opposed to the, oh, I'm sorry, no, there's...
Is it, you're right, Mayor.
That's next. Okay, so this is the discussion. Now let's move into item D, please.
11D, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with fireworks displays unlimited LOC for the sum of $10,000 for the fireworks display as part of the city's 2019 Fourth of July celebration at the City of West Miami Recreation Center. Require proof of insurance and licenses, set expenses to be funded by the City of West Miami Recreation Center Enterprise Fund under account 572428, providing for effective date. Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Padrón.
And just out there, there is a single source at this point, okay?
Yeah, the mayor is...
With that, yes, without recommendation.
The mayor is...
Motion without recommendation, please. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, have your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item 11E, this is a ratification of resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending the order of the commission agenda to provide that the citizen presentation section be entertained at the beginning of the proceeding prior to the report of the City Manager and be titled "Public Comments." Instead of "Citizen Presentations," this item is sponsored by Mayor Rodriguez.
We had this discussion and we're all again, there's only one thing, Madam Clerk, in my package under 11E, if you read the, I'm not sure if you can cross the resolution, the heading you have in here, you've, when you read it, you'll see you put a City Manager presentation twice. I think that might have been a duplication. Instead of writing, instead of putting "public comments," you put "City Manager" twice. So the first paragraph, amending the rules of the table, that paragraph under there, just reread that and it's just a typographical error. That's all.
Okay, that is a critical error and it will be corrected for the record.
Yes, okay. That doesn't require, I'm sorry, it does.
It requires both.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Yes, on the motion, Commissioner Blanes, have your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
This is a ratification of resolution?
Yes, yes.
Right.
I just wanted her to look at the, I thought it was a typo. Next item?
Next item would be item 12, which is the consent agenda items we have known this evening. Item 13, good of the order.
Does anyone have anything for good of the order? No, anyone? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night.